Good morning, everyone. Thank you for joining us for the meeting of the Board of Supervisors. We will begin today's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. It will be led today by Supervisor Crocker.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. All right, we will start today's meeting with Board of Supervisors Matters, item one on the agenda. And I will go immediately to my right Supervisor Chuck Lynn.
Chair, thank you. Um, not a lot to report. Um, last Friday, I did a podcast with the Sun Gazette that is now posted regarding COVID-19 and the homeless population and how we are dealing with that. So there's some good information there. Tomorrow morning, I will have a conference call for my web meeting, and that's about it right now.
All right. Thank you very much.
Just trying to stay healthy and make sure people are washing their hands.
All right. I hope you're washing yours.
I am.
Supervisor Valero.
Good morning, Tulare County. First, I'd like to give a shout out to a sailor from Orozco who was featured on Fox 26 News. The sailor from Orozco is now serving on the military sea lift command hospital ship USNS Mercy in San Diego. Hospitalman Lorraine Castillo aboard the Mercy was deployed in support of the nation's coronavirus response efforts and will serve as a referral hospital for non-COVID-19 patients currently admitted to shore-based hospitals. I also want to commend all of our healthcare workers who are giving tirelessly in hope, healing, and health to serve others. We want to thank you for your service to this nation. And then this one will be a little bit extensive, but I just bear with me. Two weeks ago, I introduced a request to consider a moratorium on commercial and residential rental fees for those affected by COVID-19. And yes, I understand that landlords too face challenges of their own. As of March 27th, Governor Nusa made an executive action to establish a statewide moratorium on evictions. This order, however, does not go far enough. It leaves both renter and owner unprotected in the long term. Still, the protections for renters under the governor's order aren't as strong as the protections for California homeowners who get a 90-day respite should they not be able to pay their mortgages. And I get it. We also have to keep in mind that property owners still, under certain circumstances, have to pay for water, repairs, insurance, real estate taxes, among other things. And that can get expensive. So I understand the dilemma on both fronts, and especially coming again from a family who has rental property in North Tulare County. At its meeting on April 6, 2020, the Judicial Council adopted an emergency court rule that effectively stops evictions. This new court rule will apply until 90 days after the governor lifts the state of emergency related to the COVID-19 pandemic, or until it amends or repealed by the Judicial Council. Still, this emergency rule effectively puts evictions and foreclosures on hold at least through the summer. They do not establish any tenant rights or defense to an eviction, address requirements for notifying landlords, or providing documentation when tenants are unable to pay rent due to loss of income and other COVID-19-related reasons, or address how repayment will be handled. Sadly, things are changing by the day, and we are required to move through the currents as the storm presses on. Thankfully, there are mechanisms in place to support communities affected by this pandemic, especially for those out of work and/or must abide by the stay-at-home orders put in place, somewhat ironic given the circumstances before us. And that is why it is important to know of the available resources in our communities who are willing to fill the silos of this hardship. For those listening and have the ability to share this information to affected individuals, I encourage you to utilize the following agencies who are connecting with communities on a daily basis. These organizations are helping with food security, rental assistance, and other services at this time. For example, Proteus has and is expected to receive additional community services block grant monies to support rental assistance along with utility support. Additionally, United Way of Tulare County has the Emergency Food and Shelter Program countywide and CDBG funds available to support residents in this time of need. They can visit unitedwaytc.org for help with food, rental, and utility. This organization too is awaiting additional funds from the stimulus package that will be distributed countywide. The Latino Community Foundation, based out of the Bay Area, is also contributing funds to support local nonprofits doing community outreach and support. One of those organizations in particular is changing minds one at a time. Another organization that I was in contact with recently is Bitwise Industries out of Fresno. They have reached out to various organizations and people to start the Take Care program. If you or someone you know is elderly, immunocompromised, or unable to shop for themselves, Bitwise Take Care program is offering grocery box deliveries in Fresno, Tulare, and Madera Counties. One Take Care grocery box consists of nine meals. When available, the box will include one roll of paper towels, two rolls of toilet paper, and hand sanitizer. So again, being able to request support by calling 559-460-7809, or going to the Bitwise Industry website. In these unprecedented times, my hope is that everyone will show compassion, understanding, and will continue to work on resolutions in these times. Why? Because kindness is the only strength there is. And that is all I have. Chairman?
Thank you. Supervisor Crocker. Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of things coming up this upcoming week that I wanted to highlight. Tomorrow, NACO, National Association of Counties, has their monthly Public Lands Call, which I serve on that committee. So that'll be, that's always a phone-in, so we were ahead of the curb on this. And then NACO is also hosting something, and if my colleagues are interested, I'd be happy to share that. They're hosting a conference call or webinar on Thursday, and it's specifically for caring for the aging population during COVID-19, Resources for County Leaders, and it's in conjunction with the National Association of Area Agencies on Aging. So K-T-A would be the counterpart, and that's Thursday at noon is when the webinar starts. With that, it's Holy Week, and Easter's this Sunday, so I want to wish everyone a Happy Easter out there. And, you know, spending a lot more time, many of us are being a lot more reflective. I think that it's appropriate to just pray for those that are ill with COVID-19, for the families that have lost a loved one, for the first responders, our medical personnel that are taking care of people, and for the protection for them as they continue to treat individuals, the businesses who have suffered from this shutdown, as well as all the employees who have been laid off. With that, thank you very much. All right. Supervisor Townsend.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On Wednesday, we had our Local Area Formation Commission meeting, or LAFCO, meeting right here in these chambers. I took the call-in option, and kudos to the chair for handling that very well. That's difficult to do with everybody on the phone. We had a short agenda, just a little bit of a detachment from Porterville Irrigation District and a boundary change at Goshen, CSD, just for Caltrans Pond, so not much happening there, as you might imagine. And then on Monday, yesterday, had Tule River Improvement Joint Powers Agreement meeting. Again, took the phone-in or web option on that one, which most everyone did. That one has quite a bit going on because it has to do with the Success Reservoir Enlargement program that's happening. It's in Phase 1. The bids are going to come in next month, and a groundbreaking would have happened right after that, but because of the virus and keeping apart, the groundbreaking is going to be sometime in August for that, and they're in property negotiations right now. So a lot of interesting things happening on the Success Reservoir Enlargement project. Today, I'm going to run over to the Joint Information Center and work on a video, just a little video segment about what's available for small businesses and for employees as a result of some of the damages that have happened economically during this time, and some of the things that are being offered. And so hopefully, just be a little bit of hope and a little bit of a resource for the businesses that are suffering. So mostly then, for the last week, taking a whole lot of calls and emails and text messages and Facebook messages, a lot of people asking about the court order about the release of inmates from our jails. And so, at the end of this, I'll probably make a request that we take some sort of an action, whether it's just a resolution of opposition, or make some sort of a statement in support of our sheriff and our district attorney, as they were very opposed to this court order. And so, it seems to be a very inappropriate thing that has come down from the state. And it's really bad when you hear about, these are supposed to be nonviolent offenders that are going to be released, but if you look at that list, it includes assault, it includes robbery, it includes terrorist threats. So those don't sound very nonviolent to me. So whether it's well-meaning or not, I think it's the wrong thing to do, and hopefully, people will agree and will at least have some sort of a resolution coming out. If not, I'll just write my own letter to the governor. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you very much, Supervisor Townsend. Couple of things that I wanted to go over today. Tomorrow, there will be a Board of Retirement meeting at 8:30. I see the chairman of the retirement board is out here. Good to see him outside of quarantine during these unhealthy times. Also, there will be, I think there's an investment committee, unless the chairman of the committee canceled that meeting, but that's supposed to be at 11:30 tomorrow as well for the retirement board. First five will be having its Technical Advisory Committee meeting on Thursday at 9:00 AM. That will be a Zoom meeting as well over the phone. And then, just to chime in with what Supervisor Townsend made, I just really do want to compliment our sheriff and our DA. Our sheriff specifically for advocating for the safety of our communities and making sure that people understand he is doing everything in his power to make sure that our communities are kept safe during these times, and even with the release of prisoners that's been mandated by the court, that is not something he supported or is doing so freely. He's being very, very careful with this, and will do whatever is necessary to keep the community safe. And I want to thank our district attorney for his relentless advocacy for victims. I think that's very important, that we realize that every person that is in jail has hurt or caused victims in our community to live life a little bit more delicately. And so, I really do commend both of those individuals for the work that they do. And, you know, it's very unfortunate that in order to prevent the spread of this very contagious disease, that we are making our communities less safe and putting individuals out of a jail facility that were put in there for a reason. So I do hope that this is considered and that we, as a county, do whatever we can to keep the community safe, along with our sheriff. Also want to spread the message to our constituents. Happy Easter. This is obviously going to be a very different Easter experience, but hopefully, it's a very positive one, and one of reflection as well, like Supervisor Crocker mentioned. So again, thank you to all of our first responders and to the men and women who are on the front lines in our medical facilities and are on the front lines of the battles being waged there. I sure appreciate all the work that they do, and our Tulare County staff is doing an outstanding job during this very difficult time. And I think that our CAO and HR, the efforts that were undertaken, as we've seen in the Lindsay District Office, the efforts that were undertaken to divide our staff and make sure that we're able to continue operations should an infection happen, you know, it will take some time to sanitize and get everything all taken care of, but we will be back up and operating and are leaving no constituent unserved during this very difficult time. So kudos to you as well. That's all I have for Board of Supervisors Matters, and I will now take up item two on our agenda, which is a request to receive an update from the Health and Human Services Agency on COVID-19 status and response efforts in Tulare County. Mr. Lutz.
I'll stand over here today, so I'm not broadcasting.
Yeah, Hillary appreciates it.
I thought about that last week and thought, okay, I'm going to go over here next time. So, yeah, I won't face that way either. Good morning, Chair, members of the board, CAO and County Council, Tim Lutz, Health and Human Services Agency Director. And I'll start today, as I have been with our DOC operations, and then kind of end on some discussion about HHSA operations overall. First, I did want to take the opportunity to thank my colleagues across other county departments for continuing to give us support staff for this incident. The Fire Department has been tremendous. I want to have a special thank you to Chief Norman, who was the first person to send out support to us and continues to send out additional support when asked. I also want to thank the board for generously giving us a huge amount of Carrie's time. She's been wonderful, particularly in getting the JIC organized and keeping our messaging moving. I want to acknowledge the CAO's office, HRND, IT, General Services Purchasing, RMA, all have sent staff to support us on various efforts. I had another call-out for department heads yesterday, and in talking to some, I think we'll have a few other departments that are going to send us some resources. Given the scale and duration of this event, those resources are important because they're allowing us to get a little bit of respite for the staff that have been working this for going on a month, and also trying to continue to keep the same level of response that we've had with the community. Our goal is to continue to push forward as much as we can, but we also are keenly aware of the length of this incident and the impact that it has on staff. Currently, as of this morning, and again, these numbers have been changing a lot, we are at 158 confirmed cases. We also have had six deaths. Our monitoring of self-quarantine is around 240 individuals. Again, that'll fluctuate quite a bit based on new cases and also people falling off the 14-day watch. About 31% of those cases are age 65-plus, and another 29% are 41 to 64 age range. So 60% of our infected individuals that have been tested and identified are in that 41-plus range, and a lot of them in that more vulnerable 65-plus. And I think it is important to note, last week when I was here before the board, we were at 45 cases. That clearly is a substantial increase over where we were at last week. And I think there are some important points that I want to highlight in those numbers to try and provide a little bit of context, and again, hopefully answer questions if there are any from the board. Unfortunately, 56 of those cases are related specifically at this point to the outbreak at Redwood Springs, and that's something that we have been tracking very closely. We've been working with the state, we've been working with the local administrator at Redwood Springs, but also their corporate office, specifically on driving what the plan is, making sure that they have enough staffing, that they're having enough PPE, and that they're able to serve those residents. That continues to be one of our number-one focal points, just by nature of the outbreak and the potential. We're one of a number of counties that have similar outbreaks. San Bernardino has another skilled nursing facility in a similar situation, as does San Diego. So it's definitely one of those high-priority pieces for us, and it's contributed quite a bit to our number growth over the last week. Also, many counties across the state are reporting significant increases as well. We would expect that based on the modeling and projections of approaching the surge capacity that we expect to be seen toward the end of April to the beginning of May. And another important note, we do continue to be fairly aggressive in our testing. Challenges with this is testing protocols can vary widely across every county. Some counties are doing more testing, some counties are doing less testing, and so you don't always have an easy apples-to-apples comparison in terms of how their surveillance is working. We've tested at our lab 922 county residents alone. That doesn't count all of the commercial lab activity. So we've been really trying to aggressively test where there are suspected cases, make sure that we're trying to enact self-quarantine, and provide the supports that are needed for that community. We also have established a priority system where we're focusing on our vulnerable populations, healthcare workers, and first responders first, in the focus of trying to make sure that we can locally keep our emergency services operational and also identifying those who are most at risk. There is also somewhat a discrepancy on the source used for reporting. The state system numbers actually have roughly a day lag on what the actuals are. We haven't been using the state system, we've been using our own internal reporting. So typically, we're reporting today's numbers, a lot of other counties are reporting yesterday's numbers. So where you see us growing faster and then the others trailing and catching up, it's usually because of the timing for our reporting. We are looking, as the workload increases, to maybe having to go to using what the state numbers are, recognizing the fact that that does present roughly a 24-hour lag on our actual cases at the time. So it is important to note, though, we do have community spread in the county. So the social distancing, hygiene, shelter-at-home requirements are absolutely essential right now as we approach this surge. And again, as I noted before, in line with state projections, we feel the surge will probably have its peak in the end of April to early May. So knowing that, we know the worst is still ahead of us. And I think it's important to also use that note and opportunity to highlight oncoming Easter weekend. We recognize that this is a huge time for families to get together, to connect. And unfortunately, it also happens to be the absolute worst time for that, given our approach on this surge. With community spread, there are a significant number of people within the community who are infected and either not showing symptoms, or showing a couple of symptoms and not enough to warrant, you know, going into their doctor or getting tested at this point. And it's important to also note, many of our cases that we have come in clusters, typically tied to events that are happening, whether it's a birthday party, whether it's a concert, or other type of an event that is going on. Our JIC team has been working with county parks, reaching out to city partners to try and develop joint messaging that we hope to be able to put out this week. County parks at this point, and most city parks, are planning to be closed this weekend. So moving on to general statistics and information by each of our sections, despite that most every county in the state is experiencing COVID, we still continue to see a lot of national media outlets reaching out, looking for information on what's going on. We've had 28 media inquiries, 109 articles that have been sent across, whether it's national to local, relating to our response from just 328 to 43, so last week. We're continuing to do our daily video updates, releasing videos on stigma reduction, essential services, homeless population, and appreciate each of the board members taking time, I know, to come in filming with the JIC to try and develop those personal messages that each of you want to put out. We're in the process of developing an outreach video for the farmworker community that we put out in English and Spanish, and we're working with La Lima Hano to pull that together. We are putting the goal out there of making sure our materials going out are both English and Spanish. On our liaisons, we continue to see growth there just based on the need in the community. That's the spot that we're scaling up the most. On the broad objective points, we're working with Quia Delta to support the development of a King's Tulare COVID Coalition. The group first met virtually last Friday, and will continue to meet regularly. The goal there is help in coordinating what resources are available across the hospital and clinic community, and have better assessment on hospital bed capacity. We are also aggressively pushing forward alternative care site plans for the county. This is in anticipation of the surge, and would be basically our overflow care facility should our emergency rooms become overwhelmed. And then lastly, an overarching goal is our skilled nursing facility and long-term care plans. We want to really standardize some protocols, recognizing the huge risk there, recognizing that we're battling that with Redwood Springs, and we want to make sure that we're prepared for any additional outbreaks that might occur in those types of settings. A couple key notes from our liaisons on our homeless liaison. We have been still continuing to negotiate terms with hotels. Porterville's been a bit of a challenge. We've run into three or four different ones that we thought we had an agreement with. The state even intervened on our behalf, and we still weren't able to get an agreement. So we're still working aggressively on the Porterville area to make sure that we have some hotel capacity for homeless individuals that need placement. We feel comfortable with Viseli at this point. We also feel comfortable that we have surge capacity into Tulare and can manage the north county area, but the southeast side is where we're trying to focus our efforts the most right now. Those beds in hotels would be for those with COVID but able to isolate without medical care, those without COVID but are vulnerable, so above 65 or pre-existing health conditions, and those being investigated for exposure, i.e. contact tracing, that we want to have under self-quarantine. So that's what we're targeting those beds for as the need arises. We do get a lot of calls to our business liaisons on usually a lot of identifying of businesses that shouldn't be operating, that are nonessential. The biggest ones that we hear barber shops, beauty salons, nail salons, tattoo parlors, smoke shops, gyms, and martial arts studios. Those pretty consistently come up as our tops on what people are calling in and saying they're still operating. they're still operating. If there's no questions on the liaison piece, I'll move on to operations. Sorry, and I know there's a longer report, but it's also a lot of information.
Do you want to take questions as we go through, or do you want to?
Please. I think it's, when I'm on it, I'd be happy to stop and...
Just a question or comment regarding the closing of parks. I know they're going to be closed this weekend, but after this weekend, the playground equipment, arbors, and things like that are being roped off or taped off so that people can congregate around them? Is that correct, or?
My understanding is that does vary somewhat by park, by city. I would have to, I don't know if someone from General Services is here to answer specifically after this weekend what they were planning to do. I think, I believe they were actually reaching out to want to talk to Dr. Hott on some recommendations. So I don't have the final plan at this point for moving beyond next weekend, but I would suspect there to be some changes.
Okay. And then also, have we placed any of our homeless citizens yet?
At this point, I do not believe we have.
Okay. Thanks.
Supervisor Townsend?
Yeah, Tim, on the Porterville portion of that, was the Main Street Hotel contacted that was requesting to be used as?
I believe, I think it's been four hotels that we've gone through, and I think Main Street was the most recent. And one, we were working on insurance requirements, so that might be the one that we're working through now.
Okay. They reached out specifically to the city of Porterville asking to be included in it? They wanted to?
I'd be happy to kind of get a summary of which hotels and get that sent over to you, so you have an idea of where all we've been contacting, and maybe if you have additional ideas, we'd be happy to run those down.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Valero?
Yes, so I have three quick questions.
You're only allowed one.
So the first one goes back to parks. Do we foresee any extension to the closures, or any of our surrounding cities, if you've heard that they're going to extend the closures past Easter?
Again, I think it is, at this point, not entirely clear. I've heard some indication from cities that they might want to be extending that closure, and I think our General Services is evaluating, in terms of county parks, what their process is.
Okay.
I think Daniel and Brooke can probably provide an idea of where they think they're at right now. I could certainly follow up and provide that to you, but I don't have it with me today.
Okay. Thank you. And then, in terms of commercial testing, and I know this is beyond the liaison, just prior to that, but with commercial testing, I know that when you showed up last week, you had mentioned that commercial testing was going to continue moving forward and an increase, or has that relationship between county and commercial testing been good in terms of the results and the working relationship?
We definitely are getting the results very timely. The commercial ones pose a little extra workload for us because we don't have a complete picture of like address information and other information that we would have if it was going straight to our lab. So it usually requires a follow-up phone call. We're working to work with those lab partners, commercial lab partners, to develop protocols for, this is what we really need when you send it over. So in the respect of the coordination, I think it is working well. They're really working primarily with our community clinics and hospitals, as opposed to directly with us. But where they do have that interaction, it's been, it's been good.
Awesome. And then the third, and this goes to North County. I know that you've had communication with hotels in other areas, but I know that someone reached out to me just this morning that a hotel in Dinuba would be willing to facilitate housing as well, and this hotel has actually been approved through FEMA. And so all of the kind of logistics and things on their end are ready to support any from North County there. And then just to go back really quickly on the parks, the reason why I mention this as well is because I just want us to really think about our clear messaging. When we say stay at home, and yet we still have our parks open per se, yes, closed to playgrounds, but again, just trying to make sure that we are covering our bases and that we're able to really send out that clear message that our parks are closed, because there are some that will continue to defy the stay-at-home, and will still send family and friends out to the park. And so if we're going to be strong on our messaging, that would be one of them. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you. You can continue on until the next question interruption.
Okay. No, it's good, it's good questions, and it helps me break up my monotonous drone through. So operations team is the next section. We are working to bring on additional resources. Obviously, with a three-times increase from last week, the public health nursing team is really stretched, and what we're trying to do is look at alternative types of positions that can help with some of our contact tracing investigations. I think we have some options laid out, we're working through to see if we can get commitments. So I'm hoping next week to be able to say we have some firm staff in place and we're able to continue the same level of surveillance. And that's our biggest goal here is, we can either throw more resources at it, recognizing that we're at capacity, or curtail some activities. We don't feel that we want to be curtailing the surveillance and contact tracing at this point, because I think it's been effective, but that does mean we need to find resources to help. So with community spread, we are modifying our process somewhat. We'll continue to do our contact tracing, as I noted. We'll begin tracking by household instead of individuals, and that logistically eases some of the burden. We already know that we're monitoring that household. We don't necessarily need to be monitoring every individual in that household as closely as much as getting a summary from the household as a whole. We're also modifying the frequency of our monitoring checks based on risk. And then, we're also giving extra attention to county employees and risk exposure. We're firming up an employee liaison within the nurse call center that can help triage, working closely with HR and D, HHSA HR, and our health operations folks, to make sure that we can get information timely, and hopefully avoid any redundancy in what work HR might be needing to do versus health operations. Logistics, I know that's always a big piece. So we have delivered from last week 54,794 pieces of PPE. I know PPE continues to be a big question, and I wish I had better news on the PPE front, but we do continue to see severe shortages in our PPE. Our allocations from the state have dwindled, and what's been widely reported as shortages in the national stockpile are also impacting us locally, where, and even yesterday, I reported out to department heads that we look like we were getting 10% of what we requested from our most recent PPE order. It was actually closer to 5% by the time we inventoried and tracked it. So that presents a huge challenge for us in terms of PPE for our local responders.
And Tim, real quick, before you leave that, I just wanted to reiterate some of the messages that I've been receiving from constituents who are in-home supportive services providers, having to go along and continue providing the care they provide to their clients, but many of them absent PPE, which they have actually tried to go out and purchase themselves, just even privately, and are unable to do so because there's nothing available. So if there's anything we can do to make sure that we have our providers in the in-home supportive services program having access to PPE when available, that would be great.
And the challenge being, because that was our hope, the challenge being, and this is per CDC guidance and CDPH guidance, is prioritization of PPEs going to the hospitals first, recognizing that we have a lot of gaps, and what we're trying to do internally, and I'll talk about that a bit for Health and Human Services, is really even curtail further any face-to-face interactions that our staff are having, recognizing that we just don't have the PPE necessary to support some of those operations. On the logistics side too, we continue to test people. However, the reagents also are now becoming much harder to source. When we started, we had a really good supply of those reagents. We've been aggressively shopping for those reagents. We've even modified some of our processes to use different reagents to do the tests, but there is a risk by end of the month that we will be out of reagent at our local lab to be able to continue testing if we can't get resupplied. So that's another key area that we're really focusing on. I know last week, there were some questions about some of the new tests coming out. The Abbott machine was mentioned, which Quiadelta does have a couple Abbott machines. The problem is, everybody, the machines themselves are great if people have them, but they haven't been able to get all the cartridges and reagents to be able to do the testing for them. So while we don't have the ability to do a five-minute test, some do, but unfortunately, they also don't have the supplies to be able to do those tests. And I think Quiadelta reported that even to test the machine, to get it, to get it to be, yes, certified, we are comfortable with the results, it's giving us the correct numbers. They had to use about 400 of the 500 tests that they had just to get it calibrated. So, you know, every little thing like that ends up eating up a lot of the precious testing And then on costs, we are at 670,272 to date. 226 employees are specifically assigned to the DOC to support the ongoing operations. So for broader HHSA operations, in light of the severe PPE shortage, we are working to further curtail any of our face-to-face interactions, and we're prioritizing the PPE to mandated functions that we just cannot avoid a face-to-face on. Typically, those are in the child welfare services realm on our follow-ups. So we want to make sure we're protecting our most vulnerable in the community, but also recognize that we need to have processes in place that can avoid face-to-face interactions with the public at this point. There, as noted, there was an incident last Friday where two staff at Lindsay District Office did test positive. We followed what is our continuity of operation protocol, sent all staff home as soon as those test results came in. We're bringing in a vendor to deep-clean and sanitize that office, and keeping it closed for the remainder of this week. Next week, we have our other 50% of the reserve staff who are scheduled to be in for their normal rotation. They have now been home for 14 days, so if any are sick, they would stay home. But that way, we ensure that we at least have a healthy workforce that is lower risk for exposure, coming back in and keeping operations going. We'll continue to use that strategy unless things change dramatically, and then we'll reassess, but thus far, it's been working. And then, specific program activity. I appreciate the comments on the early or the mandated releases from the state. Our Behavioral Health Services has also been working with the probation department and our justice partners, specifically to look at some of those releases. And looking at it, I had the number roughly, I think about 52% of those that are being released have some history with our Behavioral Health Services, and so we're working then with WellPath to make sure we have a handoff on care management, connecting them with the case manager, and making sure they don't fall between the cracks on our side for behavioral health. The calls to our access line, this last week were about 150 a day. That's down from the 200 a day the prior week, but well above our norm of about 33, 35 per day. So then, lastly, human services, that's where we've had a lot of activity recently as well. We have implemented a human services operations center that is set up in a similar structure to our DOC. The goal there is organize the community response, make sure we're bringing all of our community nonprofits to the table, helping to make sure we're not duplicating effort and working together. Obviously, with the high need, scarce resources, we're working hard to make sure that we're serving as many people as possible and not duplicating efforts anywhere. And then, I provided the board the information on our eligibility office visits. As you can see, from the dashboard sheets that I gave you, we continue to see an increase. I think our volume from last week was up another 20% on that previous week. I think the, looking at these, and this is a first shot at metrics, I think I want to fine-tune some of these, but moreover, I'm trying to do better on, we're developing a public-facing dashboard that's going to provide everybody this information on a weekly basis. It'll be updated to give the community a snapshot of applications and general need that's out there. We met with staff last week to kind of map out what that dashboard will look like. My hope is, it'll be live by the end of this week. And that concludes my report. If anyone has questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I have a comment from, or a question from the CAO, C-A-O. Oh, that's what it was. He needs periods there. C-A-O.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to quickly provide an update on the parks, because GSA sent me a note here. So we also discussed this in length with the city managers last week, so I think most cities and the county are sort of jointly going together on this for essentially closing the county, the parks for Easter weekend as much as you can close a park, because in many cases, there's no barrier to actually keep people out. But our county parks after Easter, unless something changes, will continue to operate as normal with just the play structures being roped off, and still the restrooms being opened, and of course, that's subject to change as things go along. But there is, there has been a lot of discussion and recognition that it's just very difficult to close a park. People are going to walk in, there's really not a lot of barriers to keep people out, but I do know the cities are going to make a concerted effort this week, at least in Visalia, and probably in Tulare, and I'm not sure about Porterville, to keep the number of people gathering at the parks to a minimum. Just wanted to follow up on that.
Okay. Supervisor Shuckley?
I want to add to that. I think the playground structures are good. I think maybe the arbors may need to be roped off also, so it, you know, lessens the incentive for folks to want to gather around there and maybe think, you know, 10 or 12 or 15 people are okay to sit around those picnic benches. I've had a lot, of course, a lot of phone calls and emails regarding Rocky Hill also. I don't know, you know, what we can do about that. I know Supervisor Crocker last week mentioned it and asked folks, but, you know, just Sunday, I drove, you know, around there, and there were cars lined up, and people walking, and I see, you know, so I don't know anything we can do about that. And then this weekend, Tim, and I'm getting some calls, and I'm seeing it myself, are the vendors out on the corners selling the corn and the strawberries and the cut fruit that, you know, they're not permitted. You know, I don't know what we can do about that, but if you need my help, I'm always there to help.
Let me go back and talk to our environmental folks. We know that's usually a challenge. Given that we have staff that are rotated out, it might be an opportunity to see, can we bring them in since they're off during the week?
Do a sweep or something like that, and let them know that we are watching.
Usually, if we do those sweeps, we try and coordinate...
Usually if we do those sweeps, we try and coordinate with local PD, in this case, Visalia. And the question is, we'll have to work out, can we do that in a socially-distanced way? Because typically, that means on a lot of those, we have to end up taking possession of all of the, the goods and products. But that's, that's a really good point. I know I've seen them too on the weekends. And it's, it's a problem normally, but I think now with...
Even more so now with sanitary things and all that, yeah.
So I will bring that back and, and try and develop a plan.
Thanks.
Okay, Supervisor Townsend.
Yeah, Tim, on the Porterville Developmental Center, have you heard anything else after the governor's announcement that they were in fact looking more closely at Porterville Developmental Center and up to 246 potential surge beds?
No, unfortunately. And we've continued to push on that piece because the last we heard was 50, and then the governor came out with the 252, I think, that he put out in yesterday's briefing, which again, took us by surprise because that's usually the first time we're hearing about it too. And our experience has been even within, PDC staff haven't necessarily been told or no. And it sounds like the original plan of 50 has changed enough that, that staff are really confused. So we are really trying to push on, what does that look like? Our Alternative Care Site Group, that's one of the key areas that they've been tasked with, is get a, get a plan laid out, written, and then we can submit it up so people can see what that's going to look like.
Okay, thank you. And let me know if I can help at all.
Definitely.
Be a liaison at all with the hospital and the area.
The hospital has been great, the city's been great. The sad thing is we're just not getting information on the state side, and that's where we're, we're pushing.
Okay, that's what I suspected, but thank you for clarifying. Thanks.
Thank you. Supervisor Crocker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to note that the Bureau of Land Management, they've shut down and closed some of their trails, specifically, I think, on Sand Creek up in the Three Rivers area. I know Forest Service is already taking steps for their public areas, although I think they're fairly limited as far as what's available unless you want to snowshoe into certain sites. And I guess we don't need to worry about Balt Park either unless you want to snowshoe in. And then Sequoia Riverlands Trust has also recently, within the last few days, have shut down their preserves from the public, so just food for thought. And then I, I wanted to really just thank you, Tim, and your staff for creating the map last week that shows where the, where people, you know, in, in regional areas where, where people that have the infections are and sharing that with the public. I think that's an extremely helpful tool. I've heard a lot of very positive things about that. Obviously, you know, we're not going to please everyone, but I think that is, that's a good faith effort in trying to be transparent and sharing more information while still protecting the individuals that do have it or, you know, from any type of mass hysteria or something. So thank you for that.
Of course.
Any additional questions for Tim? Your comment? Sure, go ahead Supervisor.
I just wanted to reiterate, I know Supervisor Vice Chair Chuckley had mentioned this about inspections as well as something that I brought up last week. So again, continue to work on something where we can be proactive on that. And then two, again, just thanking you and your agency for spearheading the work that needs to get done on the front lines and, and being able to inform the public in a timely manner. I believe that we have just an amazing PR team out there doing the work, sharing the information. And so again, thank you for all the work and your leadership in this endeavor. I know it's uncharted territory, but you're doing the work that needs to get done. Thank you.
Anything further from my colleagues? Thank you, Tim, appreciate the update. I think it's a great and consistent setting for you to be able to tell the story of the HHSA and how the county is handling the COVID-19 situation from an at-large and general perspective. So I think that's a really great thing and is much appreciated amongst the public here in the county. So thank you, Tim, and thank you to your staff for all the hard work you're doing right now.
Well, I want to, I want to thank the board for your continued support. Obviously, this has been an unprecedented time. It would, our PIO team has been great. It would be hard-pressed for me to find any one of our teams that haven't done just an amazing job, really stepped up, working the long hours, being flexible and just making it work. It really has been a, a agency-wide effort, and I'm so proud to be over this, this group of employees. They're doing a wonderful job.
Thank you, Tim. Okay, we are now going to move on and take item three on the calendar. This is time for public comments. Public comments can be given to the board on any item that is under our jurisdiction but is not on today's agenda. Public comment can and will be limited to two, three minutes. I know that we have received numerous emails with public comments. Those have been entered into the record at this time, and we have several callers online to bring forward public comment. We'll take members in the audience first right now, and then we will go to our phone lines. Are there members of the audience who are here wishing to speak under public comment? If so, please do come forward, state your name and address, and public comment will be limited to two, three minutes. Anyone wishing to speak under the public comment period? Okay, we will now turn to our callers at this time. Madam Clerk?
They'll send the first call right now.
What's that?
She's sending the first call through right now.
Good morning, thank you for holding. You are now connected to the board meeting. Please state your name and address for the record. Your three minutes will begin now.
My name is Carol Greening, and I live right here in Visalia. There are two actions, both related to the COVID-19 crisis, that you must take now. This emergency demands smart, immediate action to save lives. First, our fellow Tulare County residents are facing impossible choices. Their funds are limited. They cannot work during this shutdown. Do they buy food or do they attempt to pay rent? I urge you to immediately pass a rent and eviction moratorium. It is necessary and humane. People are safer at home. You can help them stay in their homes by preventing eviction. Failure to prevent eviction threatens to increase our homeless population. Declaring a rent and eviction moratorium is one step toward helping prevent the spread of this lethal virus. You can protect the health and safety of Tulare County residents. You have the power because we are in an unprecedented emergency and you are compelled to act on humanitarian grounds. Second, direct the sheriff to decrease the jail population. It is impossible to practice social distancing in jail. It is extremely difficult to maintain personal hygiene, such as frequent hand-washing and disinfection of surfaces. Decreasing the jail population protects the jailers as well as the jailed. Release the most vulnerable population. The CDC says elderly people or those who have asthma, cancer, heart disease, lung disease, and diabetes are most vulnerable. Pregnant women and people with compromised immune systems are also at risk. Then release individuals who have 30 days or less remaining in their sentence. Pre-trial detainees should also be released. Our state constitution allows individuals to be released under own recognizance, except in the case of public safety. Pre-trial detainees have not been sentenced, and they, a case against them has not been proved, and they should be allowed back to their home to shelter in place. With a heart full of compassion for all of us, as we navigate the troubled times of COVID-19, I urge you to treat our fellow human beings with justice and compassion. Remember, pass a moratorium on rent and evictions and lower the jail population to prevent COVID-19 spread. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good morning, thank you for holding. You are now connected to the board meeting. Please state your name and address for the record. Your three minutes will begin now.
Good morning, supervisors. This is Pedro Hernandez with California Audubon. My address is 1318 North Stafford Avenue in the city of Fresno. But I'm calling on behalf of our state organization, which includes 49 different chapters throughout the state, in order to urge the county supervisors to use their existing authority to support an eviction moratorium for residents in Tulare County. Reason being, we've been seeing calls not only within our membership, but also in the broader community of, of residents who expressed concern, again, over many of the aforementioned points that have been raised in the previous supervisory meetings, but also this morning as well, too. So we, again, we also would like to urge the county supervisors to act in good faith to bring the discussion of an eviction moratorium to the public forum. We understand that this is an issue that was raised again in previous meetings, and urge the county supervisors to hold either a virtual town hall or some sort of public forum, again, to bring this conversation to the public, to allow for more accessible participation in this very important statewide debate. Again, also, I just want to conclude with thanking the supervisors for their work, currently to stem community spread, but as we've been seeing again with the heart data and even HSSA's presentation, we, we know that the worst is yet to come. And so again, we want to be proactive rather than reactive and again, protect Tulare County's residents and businesses in a smart, delicate, and way with integrity. So thank you all.
Thank you for your comment.
Good morning, thank you for holding. You are now connected to the board meeting. Please state your name and address for the record. Your three minutes will begin now.
Good mor- good morning, my name is Elena Feldewar. I'm a resident of Pixley. I live at 1432 East Holstie Avenue in Pixley. And I wanted to voice a couple of concerns that I'm having. I'm also part of Pixley Town Council, and we've been contacted by different people. And one of the concerns is they're wondering if there is an availability of gloves and masks. And for seniors and children, they, they have to go out as much as they try not to, and so there's no availability of them at the stores. As we all know, the shelves are empty most of the time of many things. And also, I had a concern about the homeless, if there's any accommodations being made, because we have several here in our community, and it would be good if they had a place to stay where they wouldn't be up and around all the time at different places. Because of the concern of the coronavirus, if there's anything available, we'd appreciate to know. I have actually checked with some of the places here that have apartments for rent, and I still haven't got an answer, but one place that has one apartment. And also, I'm sorry, I'm going really fast because I'm trying to make the time. The closure of Seacet has made it real difficult for our members, and I understand that Earlymart is also closed, and they use, you know, we frequent it a lot because I, I even do for help with correspondence, some of the members do, for employment, for vaccine, and energy assistance, and being closed is a, a real hardship because a lot of people do not have the internet, they can't afford it or whatever, and plus, they get assistance from the people that work there on doing different kinds of things that they need done as far as living their everyday life. And so also, they have been known to have a, a problem with properly working phones, internet, and vaccine. I don't know if that's something that you would see about, if you could address, because quite often either, well, because I've gone to the Earlymart one and the Pixley one, and they're both have difficulties with their phone systems, internet, and stuff like that as long as I've known. And so pretty much, that would be about it, and I do appreciate you giving me the opportunity to bring these concerns to your attention, and I know that you'll do the best you can to help us, and I do appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Elena, for your comment. Next public comment, Hillary?
Excuse me?
Oh, I, I just said thank you, Elena. We're moving on to our next public comment.
Okay, thank you very much.
Good morning, thank you for holding. You are now connected to the board meeting. Please state your name and address for the record. Your three minutes will begin now.
Good morning, my name is Ambada A-M-B-A-R, last name Rodriguez, calling from north side of Visalia, 1409 North Divisadero Street. My neighbors are tenants and predominantly speak Spanish, so as I attempt to help them with this whole COVID thing, they have no clue what's going on. And most of the literature put out by the county is attempted to be Spanish, but it's not even properly done in Spanish. You just put some random Spanish words and pass it off as Spanish, which is extremely insulting, as if there is no effort about people who speak Spanish. And I know that's not true. Is this thing even being produced in Spanish, this Board of Supervisors meeting? I mean, you guys do tend to worry about the Spanish speakers, right? Anyways, point is, I urge you to use your authority to protect people in our county and pass an eviction moratorium, like Madera did, Delano did, and even Fresno County. Yeah, the state did pass one, but that's not enough. You need to help with eviction freezes, unless you just don't like your people in your county, and you don't even like the people who are most vulnerable, then that's all you have to say. But I stress to please do something about it rather than sitting around being passive. It's not fair for the people who have lost their jobs. They didn't ask for it. So putting a freeze on rent and passing an eviction moratorium, which would be more comprehensive specifically to Tulare County, rather than keep pushing it back to, oh, well, the state has one, the state has one, cool, but that's not enough. Once again, please stop being passive and do something about it and get this done now. Thank you. I'm done.
Thank you for your comments. Madam Clerk, are there any additional public comments?
Yes, there are three more calls.
Okay, go ahead.
Just do something about it. Just do something about it.
Good morning. Thank you for holding. You are now connected to the board meeting. Please state your name and address for the record. Your three minutes will begin now.
Good morning, members of the board and public. My name is Reina Castellanos. I live at 806 East Cypress Avenue, Visalia, California. Local resident, local small business owner. And although I know that there have been efforts at state level to try to push information or disseminate it regarding a moratorium, I do feel, and I've raised this issue several times, I've submitted letters, comment letters, stating the need for a local moratorium and enforcement just to make sure that our community understands that they, you know, it is important for us as a county to make sure that we don't have a larger population of homeless in our community. We understand the type of community we live in. We have a very large farm worker ad community, a lot of dairy workers, and they are literally one paycheck away from homelessness. As we are making a great effort to ensure that we are protecting our current homeless, we do not want to get ourselves into a position to where we now have a larger population. So pushing a moratorium on a local level and enforcing it would be very important for our local community. And speaking of our immigrant community, I do feel that, I'm very proud of the city of Fresno for taking an initiative and working with local nonprofits to make sure that there is a fund created to help our immigrant community who will not be receiving any type of government stimulus, they are not going to be able to go on unemployment, and they are not going to be able to get any type of tax return. So we've got a large population that is in a very critical situation where just postponing rent is not going to help because at month two or month three, they would have to pay two, three months of rent. And if it's hard enough to get by during one month period, now imagine where we're going to have our community having to come up with two, three months of rent when they don't even have the money or access to the money. They've also have had to incur larger expenses like maybe daycare, maybe a larger increase in the amount of food that they have to provide for their families. So please take that into consideration. I have also advocated about the need for more Spanish messaging. We would love to see a town hall in Spanish, not with subtitles, but actual Spanish language. I think that more effort needs to be made to make sure that the Spanish speakers who cannot read Spanish can also understand. That would be it.
Thank you for your comments.
Good morning. Thank you for holding. You are now connected to the board meeting. Please state your name and address for the record. Your three minutes will begin now.
My name is Myra Becerra and my address is 15966 Avenue 327. I am calling to urge the board to pass a local moratorium on rent. Our homeless problem is an issue in Visalia and in other counties. And I feel that if we take precaution and make sure that we get this addressed before it becomes a problem, there is a higher possibility for us to get something done. I feel that the board needs to be proactive instead of reactive. We need to make sure that we are able to get renters help now and let them know that, you know, their homes and their stability will be safe since a lot of people are being affected by not having jobs through COVID-19. And I really urge the board to take step now. And as some of the previous callers have stated, I would like to see more Spanish translation, not just on the medical side, but on our whole county side. There's a lot of residents that only speak Spanish that need to get this information as well as other languages. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Okay, our next caller has a regular public comment and then they have a comment for item number four.
Okay.
Good morning. Thank you for holding. You are now connected to the board meeting. Please state your name and address for the record. Your three minutes will begin now.
Good morning. Blanca Escobedo with Leadership Council. Address is 119 Linda Vista Drive in Lindsay. I'm calling today in support of an adoption of an eviction moratorium due to a threat of COVID-19. We all know since then, the governor has issued an executive order that allows residents an additional 60 days to respond to the eviction if they have met all the requirements in the order. Also yesterday, the California Judicial Council suspended evictions for the time being. However, these two orders do not go far enough. They only delay evictions until after the state of emergency is over and 90 days after the state of emergency. But it's not banning evictions, it's just delaying evictions. We have seen a lot of deaths in the country already and so many people who are ill. A lot of people are also going to be economically impacted by this pandemic. No one is going to come out unscathed. The most vulnerable groups, low-income tenants, undocumented populations, are going to feel the impacts first and are going to feel it more. The county has the ability to protect vulnerable groups so that they are not completely devastated and left without a home. If a tenant also, if a tenant has an eviction on their record, it makes it so much harder and nearly impossible to rent another place. If they become homeless, it also increases the risk of them getting the virus and transmitting it. The board does have the authority to place stronger protections for tenants. If nothing is done at the local level, we can see a wave of evictions after the governor's order and the judicial court's order expires and the courts start processing evictions again. You cannot punish those who cannot pay their rent for no fault of their own if they're not working right now and cannot find work because we're supposed to be staying at home in order to flatten the curve. We need a moratorium that allows landlords and tenants to work together on payment plans that also notifies landlords of the requirements and provides a defense to eviction. We also need to give tenants flexibility to stay at home until we're out of the woods. Also want to call the board to do a risk assessment for those whose housing is at risk due to COVID. We need all the data and facts and you need to listen to the people who are calling in, look into this matter. And also I support the idea of having a public community discussion, whether it be a virtual town hall. We're also asking the county to adopt an eviction, oh, sorry. We're also asking the county to make sure that as the stimulus relief comes down, that the county prioritizes some kind of rental assistance program to help tenants with financial relief so that they're able to pay for all their basic needs. So please put this item on the next agenda, have a community discussion, and be transparent for worth thinking and meet the moment. I now want to comment on item four.
We'll take up your public comment on item four when we get to that.
You wanted to call back?
I mean, do we have additional public?
There is one additional call.
Blanca, if it's possible, would you please call back in or do you want to make your public comment right now on item four?
I can call back.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning. Thank you for holding. You are now connected to the board meeting. Please state your name and address for the record. Your three minutes will begin now.
Hello? My name is Andrea Kelly and I reside in Tulare, California.
Okay, you can continue with your public comment.
Oh, sorry. I didn't know if I went through.
Oh, you're good.
Hello, my name is Andrea Kelly. I reside in Tulare, California. I am calling on behalf of FoodLink for Tulare County. I'm the community engagement coordinator there. I'm calling in support of the eviction moratorium and I'm urging our county leaders in order to support this moratorium. Currently during this COVID crisis, we have seen our numbers triple at our food distribution, having our citizens really desperate and seeking food. We can only imagine the other basic needs that they're seeking during this time and knowing that shelter is a basic need and very important in the prevention and the spread of COVID. We want to make sure that everyone is being safe. We want to make sure everybody has shelter and that they're not spreading COVID by being out in the streets like with their families. So we're really urging that our county leaders take a stand and make sure that they are protecting our citizens and our most vulnerable populations.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you for holding. You are now connected to the board meeting. Please state your name and address for the record. Your three minutes will begin now.
Are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, go ahead. Your public comment time period has begun.
Okay, thank you. Thanks so much. Good morning. My name is Sarah Marquez. I'm, I live in Supervisor Crocker's district. And I'm in particularly concerned about housing and rent during this crisis. I'm at high risk for contracting COVID, so shelter in place is really important. Pardon me, I apologize. It is a very scary and emotional time, so I am very concerned about the Board of Supervisors passing the buck on dealing with rent over to the state. The state's moratorium is confusing and there's not enough information for renters to be able to take action. And it is a very short turnaround time when folks are already living month to month. I would like the Board of Supervisors to do a really good risk assessment of what potential risks people have here in the community for potentially losing their housing so that way the Board of Supervisors can come up with a plan to potentially deal with an additional homeless crisis. We already have one that's difficult and this could be a potential domino effect later on and I'm super, super concerned. I'm super concerned with people losing their housing and then either sheltering with other family members and exposing other family members, living in high, pardon me, or not having shelter, period. So I would like an assessment, a stronger moratorium specifically for Tulare County as our needs are assessed because I think that's important. Tulare County has very specific needs and those need to be addressed. And then additionally, if y'all could hold a town hall so we can hear from other county level like experts exactly what this like network of support to keep people in their home and keep people healthy looks like. Thank you very much for your time. You have a good day.
Thank you. Are there any additional public comments?
There are no additional public comments.
Okay. Are there any additional public comments from members of the audience? Okay, seeing none. I will close the public comment period and bring it back to the board. I know Supervisor Shuckley and I had a quick comment.
First of all, I just, whoa, thank you. I just want to mention, we heard a lot about getting our information out in Spanish. And last week I emailed Tim and his folks there and they have started to do the daily video update that we usually see Tammy do. They are doing that now in Spanish, so I want, I thank you for that. I forgot to mention that earlier, Tim. And then also I just want to encourage the folks, you know, that have called in about the evictions that there are a lot of rental assistance. I'm hoping that people are looking into some rental assistance programs and whatnot that are out there also. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now take up our consent calendar, items four through 15. Item four will be removed for public comment. Are there any additional? She has not called back yet. Well, we'll remove the item and take it up separately and hopefully she's listening and can call back right now. Are there any additional items that need to be removed for public comment? Okay, so item four will be removed for separate comment from the consent calendar. Are there any additional items to be removed or corrected by members of the board or members of the public?
Move approval if not.
Okay, move approval of the balance?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion by Supervisor Shuckley and a second by Supervisor Townsend. Please vote. Motion passes 5-0 unanimously. We will take up now item four. We have a comment from Supervisor Valero.
Yes, so I just wanted to make
Yes, um, so I just wanted to, uh, make clear and put into record because I know that there may be some concerns out there with regards to our industrial hemp processing requirement, but do note that there are structures already in place that will help, uh, remedy the situation. So I just wanted to kind of read into the record so people are aware that outdoor, all outdoor processing of industrial hemp must be 1,000 feet away from urban development as defined by any city, urban development boundary, park, church, or school. Additionally, all industrial hemp processing requires a 200-foot setback from any residence not owned by the processor. Indoor, all indoor processing of industrial hemp must be 1,000 feet away from any city, urban development boundary, park, church, or school if in an agricultural zone. In manufacturing zones, there is no setback requirement from urban development. Nevertheless, in manufacturing zones, it requires a 200-foot setback from any residential zones. Special use permits, all industrial hemp processing, uh, requires an approved special use permit. The Planning Commission approves, conditionally approves, or denies special use permits after holding, holding a public hearing during which the public has the opportunity to make comments. Property owners within 300 feet receive an advance notice of the proposal and the date time of the public hearing, so they have the opportunity to share comments in advance of the Planning Commission's decision. And that is what I wanted to include in the record. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Uh, thank you. We do have additional public comment that is on the line at this time. Hillary?
Thank you for holding. You are now connected to the board meeting. Please state your name and address for the record. Your three minutes will begin now.
Blanca Escobedo, 119 Linda Vista Drive in Lindsay. Um, the audio is a little bit delayed in line, so I was just hearing Supervisor Valero talking about, um, how there will be an opportunity for communities or, um, for people to give, um, a comment when, if there's ever a permit for this type of facility. But I also wanted to call in to express concern, um, on the cultivation requirements and processing requirements on page five of the ordinance, um, specifically, um, point B, item three, where there's a minimum, um, we are calling for a minimum 1,000-foot setback from any residence not owned by a grower. It's, uh, presently 200 feet. Um, and for the processing requirements, item B, point two, um, we're also, uh, calling for a minimum 1,000-foot setback from any residents in agricultural zoning in M1 and M2. The reason for this is because a lot of, uh, unincorporated communities or already disadvantaged communities are placed near these types of zoning and complain about, um, impacts, um, from invasive facilities that are already existing. Um, and we want to make sure that the county act commissioner and other staff are taking the community's concerns, um, if and when there is a, uh, applicant, um, wanting to apply or issue a permit. Um, if and when this happens, uh, the applicant and the county act commissioner and the county should consult with communities to reach a community benefits agreement if they are going to be exposed to impacts from this industry. Invasive industries, um, are always on the backs of these communities and we're already, we have been hearing, um, impacts from pesticide drift, pesticide exposure, or quality impacts. Um, nonetheless, this type of industry can also bring, excuse me, more truck traffic, noxious odors, and public safety concerns. So I just wanted to read those concerns, um, and hopefully, um, as this progresses, we really do bring communities to the table to make sure that their concerns are addressed. Um, thank you.
Okay, thank you for your public comment. Are there any additional public comments, Madam Clerk? Okay, seeing no public comments, no additional public comments, we will bring it back to the Board for discussion and/or action. Supervisor Crocker?
Mr. Chair, I'd move to approve.
Second?
Here we have a motion by Supervisor Crocker, second by Supervisor Shuckley, and please vote. Motion passes five zero unanimous. Uh, thank you very much for, uh, that motion and item. We will now take up our untimed portion of our meeting, uh, today. Um, we'll take up item 16, which is a request from the clerk of the Board to amend resolution number 2020-0057 regarding evening meetings in 2020.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. On behalf of our chief clerk, uh, she's requesting that we amend the resolution, uh, 2020-0057, um, to change, to delete the April 21 evening meeting and related three o'clock closed session and schedule the regular meeting on April 21, 2020 at 9:00 a.m. here in these chambers.
All right. Uh, Chair will entertain a motion on this item. Uh, any public comment or, uh, comment in, within the chambers? Okay, seeing none, we have a motion by Supervisor Valero, second by Supervisor Townsend. Please vote. Well, I would, I would vote for Supervisor Shuckley and, but she is not here and so, since she has stepped off the dais, she will abstain from this vote and the motion, uh, does pass four zero with one abstention from Supervisor Shuckley and who has stepped off the dais. We will now take up, uh, item 17, which is a request from the county administrative office to receive the mid-year budget report for fiscal year 2019, 2020. I will turn it over to you, Mr. CAO.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Thank you for this opportunity. It's my pleasure to bring to the 2019, uh, 20, 2019, 20 fiscal year mid-year budget report today. Uh, just a quick framework of what we're going to be discussing today is we'll talk a little bit about our financial strengths and challenges, um, some of the state, uh, budget, um, highlights, um, dive into a local perspective in terms of our assessed evaluation sales and use tax property, uh, Prop 172 tax, and then we'll, um, talk about department requests and also ask for your approval for the fiscal year 2021 budget schedule. So going on to our county financial strengths, um, we continue to, um, see economic growth and development, although that's suddenly changed, um, recently. Um, our budget is still within, uh, in alignment with our fiscal sustainability. Uh, our growth of reserves and trust fund, uh, management, um, has, is one of our strengths is that we, uh, continue during the good times to build reserves and other, um, uh, sub-funds and we managed, have managed those, uh, fairly, um, well, um, to help us weather, um, any downturn. The county has also continued to, um, through the financial policies and the direction of this Board to adopt, uh, and to have effective debt management. So we have, um, very little debt, um, mostly, um, aside from our pension obligation bonds. The only other debt we really, um, have, um, is our millennium fund bonds, variable rate bonds, and a very small debt left on, um, a, um, energy efficiency project. Um, we continue to, um, improve our capital, uh, projects, um, and maintenance and, and construction expansion, and the departments continue to perform at levels consistent with the county's adopted business plan. There's a few areas of the January's Governor's Budget that was proposed. Um, the total budget is 222.2 billion. Um, I won't go through all of the numbers because, um, those are likely to change now. Um, but there are still some special areas of interest, uh, that the state is, um, we're, we are expecting the state to continue to focus on and that is including, uh, looking at their reserves and reducing liabilities, housing affordability, homelessness, uh, emergency response, um, continued investment in K-12 education, expanding access to higher education, climate protection, criminal justice, um, changes and, um, jobs and protecting the environment. Most recently, as of, I'm not, I believe it was April 5th or 6th, um, Assembly Member Phil Ting, which is the, he's the Chair of the Assembly Budget Committee, uh, released a letter that sort of, um, outlines the Assembly's plan for the state's budget through this COVID-19 crisis and I just wanted to share that with the Board and the public so that, um, because at the time of this, uh, writing of this, uh, presentation, um, things were a little different. Um, so one is, um, the Governor's May revise, which comes out typically in mid-May, is expected to be a workload budget. Um, I'm not quite sure what that word means, other than, um, we think that it will continue to reflect current service levels for 1920, so essentially, um, what I might call is a status quo, uh, budget for the state if I, if I'm interpreting that language correctly. Um, he also has outlined that when the legislature resumes at work, it will not consider any new spending priorities, stakeholder ideas with the exception of, or stakeholder ideas with the exception of COVID-19-related costs, wildfire prevention, or homelessness. Um, and in fact, um, it also may be necessary to revisit and reduce existing state programs depending on the state's fiscal condition. Um, given that there is a three-month delay, uh, for personal income taxes, uh, Chair Ting points out that the state will not have a complete picture of available revenues really until August, and so therefore he expects, um, really, um, budget deliberations to really begin in earnest in August. So, um, I bring that up just to sort of highlight that, uh, there will be some continuing uncertainty in the state's budget as we weather through this COVID-19, um, response and, and we are able to better understand what that really means, um, to the state's economy as well as the local and federal economy. The Governor also stated on April 4th in his, um, noon press conference, um, that all January budget proposals are being reviewed and, quote, recalibrated in relationship to the budgetary crisis that is starting to manifest. Despite the across-the-board reconsideration, the Governor made clear he does not plan to walk away from reforms, implying that some reforms could proceed without budgetary impacts. I highlight that just because the Governor himself is starting to use language such as, uh, budgetary crisis, um, he's also, they're also looking at potentially some reductions in the state budget. Uh, so again, it's, um, we, we don't know how that's going to look. We don't know how that's all going to shake out, um, but we will continue to monitor that and, and update this Board as, um, as appropriate. Switching now from the state to the local perspective, um, we continue to enjoy, um, fairly good, uh, local assessed evaluation, um, increases. As you see there, our three-year average is at 4.77, um, a 15-year average of 4.79, so, uh, good job, Mr. Assessor that's out in the, um, audience today.
Didn't even get a smile, Mr. CAO.
He's not, maybe he's sleeping. Um, so again, I think that reflects that we are a growing county, um, assessed valuation has, it continues to grow, which is good for in terms of property tax, um, valuation. Um, again, this is our sales and use tax allocation. This is really just a, a 10-year, a picture of our actual revenues compared to in the last column there, the darker shaded blue is what we budgeted this year. Um, so we did conservatively budget revenues, um, and, um, and you can see where we actually came in, um, for 2019 and prior. Um, again, not sure exactly what this new uncharted territory is going to bring to us, um, but, um, we will continue to keep the Board updated as, as, as possi, as much as possible. Uh, same thing on our Proposition 172 public safety sales tax. Again, um, we, um, have budgeted a little bit lower than our normal, um, collected revenues and you can see there that that has steadily climbed, um, over the, over the past few years. A pretty large bump, uh, last year and, um, again, uh, we do expect that if there are, um, revenue, um, declines, it's most likely going to be in sales tax, TOT, um, still not clear what happens with property tax, although the tax collector did inform me this morning that we are on track for collecting property taxes at historical averages. So, um, so at least that sounds good on the property tax.
Historical average is plus $25, right?
Yeah, maybe. So, so the, good news on the property tax front, at least, um, it looks like that our collections, we'll know more next week as the, uh, final deadline is Friday, April 10th, on, on what that looks like. Um, in terms of our departments, um, departments are, continue to be on track, um, they continue to be at, at or below allocated targets. Um, our general fund revenues, um, are 35% collected, um, that's about 1% lower than last year, and our expenditures are at 51% expensed, which is about 2% prior than last year. And as you can, um, and that's kind of normal, uh, for this time of year, there's not really anything super abnormal. We'll look at those a little bit more in detail as we get on, uh, with the report. Um, before we get into those individual discussions, there is sort of a five-year summary of our, uh, general fund budget and with the number of filled and allocated positions and our, um, and our percent of filled positions.
Mr. Chair, before you, Mr. Chair, I am the Chair.
I got promoted today.
Mr. CAO, Mr. CAO, thank you for, um, the presentation, just real quick while I had this slide up. I think it's important for departments that are following online or, um, members of the audience seeing this. You know, we have maintained 86, 86, 86, 86. Now we're at 85% of filled positions. It, it appears to me that, you know, over time, we are growing as a county, uh, very responsibly, but our number of, uh, filled positions has remained the same, which indicates to me we have a lot of filled, or I'm sorry, a lot of positions on the books that may not be necessary. Uh, is there going to be an effort underway, especially given the uncertainties of what is coming in the future, to, uh, right-size departments to the actual number of positions that are needed to, uh, provide the important services that our departments provide?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I think departments have, um, vacancy rates and vacant positions for a number of reasons. Um, certainly we, through the budget development process this year, we can work with each department to determine and evaluate, um, why that is and what that looks like and, um, encourage them to reduce those numbers if, if we find necessary. Um, but your point is well taken. I appreciate that, that feedback and we'll take that to the departments and as we work on budget development, we'll look at those, um, those vacant positions and, and what we can maybe do to help, or reduce that gap.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so in our mid-year, going on to our general revenues, as you can see here with our five-year picture, uh, there's really nothing, um, uncommon or unusual, um, out of the ordinary. We, we are on track, uh, to, to look at our, our general O-31 revenues, um, and, and same for our, the remainder of our general fund revenues. We continue to track about the same, um, place we are at every mid-year report, uh, between recognized and uncollected, um, dollars and those, um, so we're, we're feel confident that, um, absent some major, um, issue with the state budget where they may, um, slow payments, um, they may have a cash flow issue, uh, or, um, chop, uh, programs, um, sort of, quote, mid-year or at the beginning of the year, um, I don't expect that to really change much. Uh, again, our, uh, general fund expenditures, moving on to the expenditure side, um, again, at a five-year picture, we're sort of tracking about where we are, um, each year at this time, um, between obligated and unobligated expenses. So, uh, again, another, um, reason that we believe we will finish, um, on target. target, again, absent something major intervening due to this COVID crisis. We do have some departmental requests to add a few positions, and to delete a few positions, I'm not going to go through the whole list, the majority of these have been all discussed with our, the office, and the departments have made good business case reasons for needing them. The District Attorney has a handful of positions for his cornerstone, or his Porterville office, that's going to be soon moving to the cornerstone building. There is of note, four positions in here, three fire apparatus engineers, and a fire captain, that will, our staffing that is going to go to support Fire Station 1, as it starts to open later this spring. We also have salary request, adjustment requests, essentially, there's a whole lot of things on this page, but essentially, this is the 2% equity increase for unrepresented attorneys that we did in mid-year, so that we could coincide that equity increase on July 5th, to commensurate with the effective date of all the other cost of living adjustments that occur with the county through either what's been passed by this Board, or through negotiated MOUs, and a couple positions where we had to do some, some cleanup for Major capital assets, there's a number of capital assets here for a burnisher for custodial, AC machine for fleet, some cars and battery packups, a lot of X-ray machine, pressure washers, generators, probation has some, is also purchasing a duress system and full metal detectors that will be used at their new Kmart, or I don't know what, if we've named that building yet, but formerly known as Kmart Building, that, for security and entering that building, and then the road fund is making some requests for pickups and message boards for their workout on the roads. Message, message signboards. We do have a few budget adjustment requests, mostly to help cover operating expenses for our airport, we still operate Sequoia Field at a deficit, and then, again, some requests for the capital assets to adjust their budget in order to make those purchases, also transferring funds to capital projects for capital project needs that have been occurring at the Visalia Courthouse, and also transferring funds for IT to, to cover costs with around 26 projects that they've been working on. We also have some unanticipated revenue from the Medi-Cal Outreach Program for our library, we're also asking to transfer funds to capital projects to cover costs for the cornerstone building, and also continue funding, transferring funds to close the gap on our groundwater sustainability, sustainability agency membership fees. We also are asking to transfer funds to cover capital projects expense and capital asset purchases in probation, and then, of course, the roads board adjustment for their capital assets, and then also to cover administrative support for water operations and consolidation for Seville Water. So, that's the good news. There are some financial challenges aside from the COVID-19 pandemic, that I've probably continued beating this drum, and will continue to do so. You know, we are entering an, a time of uncertainty, not sure what that looks like, but it's also a time where we're increasing operational and structural costs fairly, fairly high, quite a bit. There's also increasing legislative and regulatory requirements relating to employee compensation that drives a lot of our costs, rising employer retirement contribution, which is potentially could get worse with the downturn in the market, along with our pension obligation bond payment, detention facility operational costs, mostly, although not exclusively, in the area of jail medical, that is, continues to be an increasing cost to the general fund. Our fire department organizational and capital asset planning, our zones of benefit water and wastewater systems, our internal service funds expenses outpacing rate increases, our groundwater sustainability agency fees, and other regulatory compliance, and of course, any type of economic recession and impact of the COVID-19 pandemic can present challenges to our budget. I did want to bring to the Board's attention some specific structural costs that are increasing to our Board, to our budget, primarily because we have been, the Board, along with our departments, have been engaged in a number of projects over the last couple of years, things like the formerly known as Kmart Building, the cornerstone building, our new Motorola dispatch center, dispatch software, and a lot of those costs are now, are now going to be realized in the fiscal year 2021 budget, and those costs are significant. We're estimating around $6 million just for cost of living, step merit and benefit increases, another $1.1 million in the rental costs associated with the Kmart lease, a, almost a $700,000 increase in rental costs associated with the cornerstone building for the DA and the public defender, and this does, this figure does not include any staffing that may have to come along with, with, with the, the Porterville courthouse opening new courtrooms and expanding business in the South County, and then, a $2.6 million increase in jail medical costs, and again, these continue to grow every single year, and, and these, this is above and beyond our current $3.9 million general fund contribution, and then, of course, a couple, a couple hundred thousand dollars for our dispatch center, and then, we're expecting about a four and a half to five million dollar increase in general fund support for the fire department, and this is primarily due to increase in salaries, benefits, and costs associated with Fire Station 1. Those things alone add up to a lot, and six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 15 million dollars, and I'm guessing that we'll be able to, we'll have increased revenues around eight to 10. So, we are going to have to look at maintaining and keeping some of our, our costs on target, and looking at ensuring that as we go through budget development and budget planning, that we are really not growing much, and that we're keeping the status quo. I know that's difficult for departments sometimes, because we also have to balance the demand for increasing services, but right now, with the, just the general growth that's occurred in the county, along with the potential downturn in revenue that, that we're watching closely, that is going to put pressure on our budget. We do not know what that looks like yet, and there are a lot of things that we can do before we get there, but that, I didn't, I don't want to leave the Board with an idea that it's going to be as easy as it has been in past years. The final challenge I just wanted to point out to the Board is the, the budget adjustment that we're asking for to cover our groundwater management agency membership fees. In, in fiscal, in the previous fiscal year, we were paying about $715,000, this year we budgeted for $904, and the actual fees are 1.4, so it's a $558,000 increase. I do know that some of the GSAs are looking at Prop 218 processes to help recoup some of those, but I did want to bring this to the Board's attention because of the large variance, it is $558,000 that we're having to make up, that was unexpected, and there's also the CV Salts Program that's likely to materialize next year, which is going to require another investment probably from us, and so there's more to come on that, but just wanted to bring that to the Board's attention. And finally, we are, our budget schedule for this year is going to be, notice the final budget hearing posted on August 26th, with final budget materials to the Board and the public on the 28th. The recommended budget hearing is set to be September 15th, with the final budget hearing, which may proceed to October 2nd, also on September 15th. We are expecting to get personnel resolutions with all adopted personnel actions finalized by September 18th, and an adopted budget book to the Board of Supervisors and Public by November 20th, and with that, with the auditor submitting our adopted budget book to the state on December 1st, which is within the timeline scheduled by the Board. And finally, as we go into budget development with the, with the departments, I, I want to recognize that with the COVID-19 response and duration, that may create some challenges for our departments in the budget arena, and my office stands ready to be flexible and to be of assistance to departments as much as possible, to help us meet our targets and meet our timelines. We will proceed with a budget protocol plan that we have used in previous years, which is, we will use historically conservative and reasonable revenue estimates to ensure a balanced budget. Proceeds from sales of real property will be designated for future capital needs, one-time funds used for one-time purposes, that's going to be more important than ever this budget development cycle. We also want to emphasize that county agencies and departments should seek grants and other funding opportunities and revenue sources to maximize intervention prior to usage of general fund support, and also minimize commitments requiring reoccurring general fund support. And then finally, any structural increases or substantial one-time funding to agency or department budgets require an analysis of new or expanded sources of revenue and operational efficiencies to ensure budget sustainability. And again, we, we just want to make sure as we, as we enter into times of uncertainty, that we continue to minimize our growth, and that we are able to contain, to continue to have and enjoy a balanced budget, and continue to provide the services that we need to provide. With that, I'd like to thank the Board for their support, all of the staff in the County Administrative Office, the Clerk of the Board, HR, Auditor, Controller, Tax Collector, the Assessor, Clerk, Recorder, County Council, and all the county agencies and departments who, who participate in providing information and data for this presentation. And with that, I will answer any questions or comments.
All right, Supervisor Crocker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, a couple of things, one, I wanted to, and I know you've stated this already, but just recognize, I think it's very positive that we have conservative revenue projections based on what's going on right now, I think that that will be very helpful where we're not budgeting for large increases in sales tax and other revenue, that should help us with easing the pain. Also, I wanted to highlight that in addition, for Fire Station 1 in particular, one of the, or part of the staffing, the cost increase is that we're going to 2O staffing for Fire Station 1, or that will be a 2O staffing, correct?
That's my understanding, yes.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's, that's a positive thing in and of itself, recognizing that we don't have, not all fire stations have that, that level of staffing, so that's something very positive, that we'll be getting not only a new station, but, but getting that 2O staffing. Couple of, of questions or requests, one on the, I appreciate bringing up the sustainable groundwater management and some of the GSA rising costs, and I'd like to bring to attention to my Board colleagues, as well as staff, on the East Coia Groundwater Sustainability Agency. East Coia has taken a different approach than most GSAs, where they are, they are going through the process, we are going through a process of doing a 218, however, that 218 will be limited to only certain types of costs, there will still be costs associated to the individual members that are participating in the agency, so there will still be larger costs that the county would be on the hook for, for the wide areas that are included in, in the East Coia. Most of the other GSAs, I believe, have their own mechanisms to do GSA-wide 218s, the other members are water agencies, so they have ability to already assess, and they're going through their own individual assessments to recoup those costs from their members, however, we don't necessarily have that ability, and so I would recommend that we begin the process to create a new district, or whatever that process looks like, I don't know specifically, but to recoup those costs. I think that the individual farmers in the East Coia would, they recognize and understand that they've got to foot their share of the costs as well, and, and I think that's something that's worthwhile to pursue, to overcome those, that half million plus dollars that, and possibly even more, I mean, the, the costs of groundwater sustainability agencies are only increasing, and so I, I don't, I think that's worthwhile, I know, I recognize that that's something that would take time to be able to create a specific fee district to recoup costs just for this GSA, but because of the way that the, the leadership has gone about it, that I think that's necessary for this particular GSA that won't necessarily be needed for some of the others, because they're, they're doing it GSA-wide. So that's, that's the comment or request, and I'd be very supportive of going through that to help us recoup some of the, some of those costs. The other question is actually for our tax collector, I know he's in the hallway, and it's somewhat unrelated, but it, I think it, it's still kind of related, if you could just provide an update on the property tax situation, and I know that as it relates to COVID-19, and, you know, I know you've already had a press release that went out, and you've tried to be very proactive, and so I appreciate that, I'm sure that I'm not the only one that's getting calls and contacts about Kern County, and what their grandstanding is doing, if you could just maybe comment on that. I, I don't know if your mic's on.
Yeah, maybe just.
Look on the screen, maybe?
Switch over to the.
Is it, it is on? Okay.
Yeah, so I just, first of all, I'd encourage everyone who has the ability to pay, to pay their property tax by this Friday.
I did yesterday, you're welcome.
Thank you. And then just also highlight that property tax goes to counties, cities, special districts, even hospitals, so it's funding those frontline workers that are so busy and essential right now, so I want to highlight that as well. State law designates April 10th as the due date for property tax. In consultation with County Council, we reaffirm that that is the law, and we don't have the ability to change the, that due date, so property tax are due on the 10th. Within property tax California law, there is ability by the tax collector to waive penalties and fees, now that's a very narrow window of, of what we're able to do, but in terms of COVID-19, we, that, that window is actually opening a little bit, so property tax due on the 10th, but after the 10th, on our website, we'll have a form for those who cannot pay to fill out to, due to COVID, directly due to COVID-19 reasons, they could ask for a penalty waiver, and then, and then make a payment without a penalty. So that, that will be going up Friday, Friday evening.
So, we can. So we can direct individuals to the website at Friday evening and say there will be a, a place for people to seek that relief?
That's right. We would appreciate that. I would also, oh, I'd see, I already mentioned it, we're on track so far on, on property taxes collected to date, so.
And so just to reaffirm, so what Kern County has done is essentially the same thing that you're doing, they're just stating it in a different way. They don't have any new authority that you don't.
They don't have any new authority that we don't.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Auditor, Treasurer, Tax Collector. Are you done Supervisor Crocker with your questions? Okay, Supervisor Shuckland?
Yeah, first of all, I want to thank Jason and all his staff for their hard work on, on putting this together. It's very thorough, a little disheartening, and a little scary, but we, we need to be transparent and know what's ahead for us. It's kind of unfortunate that, it seems like everything that was planned in the past with good intent is kinda all coming online now, Fire Station, jail, and it's, it's all hitting us at, at once. But I know we'll, we'll work through it, and I just wanna reiterate my agreement with Chairman Vanderpool, taking a look at the vacancies, the vacancy rate within the departments, and see what we can do about that. That's it.
All right, Supervisor Valero.
Yes, all right, thank you. I too wanna echo my colleagues in saying thank you to our CAO and leadership team for putting this together, especially in factoring in uncharted territory as we move forward, and then also to all of the department heads for being understanding during these times as well. I just wanted to bring up something that was mentioned by Supervisor Townsend a few meetings ago with regards to our roads, and I know that he had expressed interest in seeing somewhat of an increase. Would that be reflected here, or some?
That would, that would not be reflected here right now, that would likely be reflected either in the budget development process for new budget coming next year, or through a separate avenue through the CIP, C-TIP, that they normally do each year. But we, we have not lost sight of, of the road issue and the reserves. I've been working with RMA to figure out what that looks like and when that should come to your board for discussion, so it, it should be coming soon.
Yep. And then lastly, also just echoing my colleagues in terms of vetting, vetting the positions that are sitting there and what can be removed in addition to what we're adding to, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Supervisor Townsend.
Yeah, and just also wanted to thank our CAO and, and all the staff for putting this together, and especially appreciate you, Jason, for always reaching out and telling us ahead of time, keeping us very much in, in the loop about the, about your thoughts, and, and I think the fiscal conservatism approach that we're taking is, it's just very wise, and I think it's showing how prudent it is in this given time, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, and then I will just conclude comments with just reiterating a lot of what has been said by my colleagues. I think it's been a great job that you've done here, Jason, and your team, and I want to thank all department heads and county employees for your understanding and adhering to the guidance laid out here. You know, I, I know we are entering and are in very uncertain times, and we don't know where this is gonna go, but I do think that our budget protocol plan and what we have done year over year to put us in the financial position that we are in here today is very, very important to be mindful of going forward. I do think that this approach is going to result into Tulare County being in a better position than many of our fellow counties who are a little bit more aggressive in their revenue estimates and are underestimating expenses. While we do have our own set of uncertainties and unknowns that you have listed here that we have to prepare for, our approach has historically bode us very well, and I think it's gonna help us get through this situation that we are coming up to, so appreciate the comments. You wanna add anything?
Just, Mr. Chair, just wanna, before we, before the board took action, just wanted to say, one is, you know, again, I do appreciate the board's guidance, I also appreciate all the departments and agency heads. We, we're, we're in this together. If you are having trouble through this crisis of getting your budget completed, please engage with my office sooner than, than later, so we can help you with that. And then finally, before the board takes action, I'd just like to read the requested actions. One is to receive the mid-year budget report for fiscal year 1920, two, to approve the proposed schedule and adoption of the fiscal year 2021 budget, which incorporates a rollover budget as the operating budget, including capital projects, for the period between July 1st, 2020, and adoption of the fiscal year 2021 budget. Also, to adopt a personnel resolution to add, delete, and amend positions and approve and amend the required job specifications, class designations, and salary adjustments proposed in the mid-year report, subject to meet and confer. Four, to approve the capital asset purchase list, and to five, authorize the auditor, controller, treasurer, tax collector with the concurrence of the county minister of officer to process any budget adjustments proposed for, in the mid-year budget report.
Okay, thank you very much. I, before we take action, want to open it up for public comment. Is there anyone here in the audience wishing to comment on the mid-year budget report? Sure, please do come forward, state your name and address.
Good morning, Chairman, Scott Harness, 653 North Hayes, Dinuba. Just out of curiosity, after the presentation by your CAO, with everything you've got going on right now, the, the pie only being so big, with code enforcement, with HHSAs personnel requests, does that include the additional need for manpower to, to attack this sidewalk vendor issue that seems to be a consensus of the, the board?
I think that there's enough money included for a new badge for Supervisor Shuckland.
Well, I would help her with that badge if I could get one as well, but clearly, there's, it's been a manpower issue. Sitting on Dinuba's GAC, we've met with Health and Human Services, and it's a lack of manpower. So with those additional personnel requests, does that include something specific to tackle the sidewalk vendors?
So that, that, the, the personnel requests to add that are before the board today from the health, agency, does, does not include resource, their resources for that? It's primarily around to expand their whole person care waiver and some other services that the, that the state is expanding. I do know that the, the agency, and I don't know if Tim wants to speak to this, but they, they will be bringing their normal fee proposal on the 21st, that typically they outline sort of what their plan is for environmental health at that time. I, I'm not sure what the resource constraints are for environmental health, but I, I know Tim and his team are looking at that to try to figure out how we can, how we can manage that. I just know historically, from my years of being at the agency, it has really boiled down to, there is a direct correlation between the amount of fees that people pay and the number of staff you get, and that's the balance. That's difficult to achieve sometimes.
Okay. All right, well, I just would note that District 4 Supervisor Valero's been approached many times. The, we, Dinuba's GAC has members, business owners in Dinuba and unincorporated jurisdiction, and we would like to help with a solution, basically a coalition of other chambers to request respectfully more code enforcement there. The, the consensus from small business owners is just to allow equal time, equal focus on the sidewalk vendors as they are the brick and mortars. That's been the discouraging part, is, is the focus on brick and mortar and driving past some of the others. So on behalf of those business owners, I just wanted to ask that question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I mention something also, Scott? We've talked about this in the past, and the sheriff is also working on this because of labor trafficking. A lot of folks, they're coming, and that's what I see. You see people just standing there with no car, or some, I saw a guy the other day didn't even have a chair. So, you know, there's, there's more to this than, than that, but I agree with you regarding the enforcement and what needs to happen.
Okay, and I, I didn't want to put that on, on the sheriff, because I don't know his budget specifically, and Dinuba, we were able to use PD, and we tackled this with the Obama phone providers setting up across the street from cell phone stores, and so we had the resources in small-town Dinuba to be able to use PD, but I didn't know if the county could do the same. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Mr. Lex, do you have any comments?
And thank you, Jason, for echoing a lot of what I would say. We don't have any specific requests on code enforcement, not code enforcement, environmental health inspectors within this budget request. Fees do continue to be a, a limiting factor for us, so the way that we fund our environmental health program is primarily fee-based. Historically, over the years, as the cost of our staffing has gone up, retirement contributions, all of those, those labor factors have gone up, we've had to backfill some of that with our health realignment dollars. The challenge we have with that backfill is creating a balance of every time you're using that, it's, it's decreasing response elsewhere. With our increased jail medical costs, a significant portion of our health realignment dollars are also going toward, toward addressing healthcare within our jails. So what we try to do is strike a balance. We, we are vetting with the CAO right now about bringing a new fee proposal forward that would change fees somewhat to our restaurants. We hope this will help address it, because what we want to start to do is look at where we can add more staff or do some types of rotational coverage to provide broader coverage on weekends, evenings, times that we have a lot of those, those types of problems or challenges that we're hearing about. But we are very cognizant about bringing fees forward that are then gonna turn around and impact our business community.
I'll just make a comment. I, I think that it's, it's a very important point to realize that, yes, environmental health is fee-driven, it's a cost recovery type model, but when businesses that are brick and mortar are paying fees to cover their own inspections, they're also paying fees that should benefit them by helping to reduce those that aren't complying, that aren't playing by the same rules, and so it would be, you know, to me, it would seem that it would be logical to reduce the policing of brick and mortar institutions, to increase a, a little bit on the enforcement side or inspection side of the non-complying vendors because of the impact they are having on general public health and welfare by getting people ill, or by having more of a, a negative impact because they aren't inspected. So I, I just think that we have to maybe rethink how we are approaching the environmental health inspections and code enforcement, utilize the sheriff a little bit more, and maybe create an innovative program to help address the human trafficking aspect, as well as the unlicensed vendor aspects as well, but-
I think that's an excellent suggestion on, on looking for, as we evolve, clearly we need to evolve with the, the times and where the challenges are. Those are a lot of the discussions we are having in environmental health, and will continue to have. I really like the suggestion on those types of coalitions or groups that we can come together with and, and try and address this holistically.
And Supervisor Valero had a question or comment?
Yes, I just wanna say that I agree wholeheartedly with our chairman, and also just to share, because I know that Mr. Washam, who's outside, I know that he has been working on code enforcement in terms of hours and operations when they're out in the field, and so maybe, again, stressing that to our inspectors, to say, look, we're going to divvy up the times, whether it be during the day or in the evening, but also to continue to have that enforcement visible, so thank you.
All right, thank you. Any additional comments from board members? All right, Chair will entertain a motion at this time.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Supervisor Valero. Second by Supervisor Townsend, please vote. Motion passes unanimously, five to zero. We will now take up the next item on our agenda, which is item 18. At this item, board members may make a referral to staff to have a matter of business considered for a future agenda. I have a request from Supervisor Townsend.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and that was just to follow up on the comment that I made during Board Matters. I would like us to take up consideration of drafting a resolution of opposition to the court order ordering the release of 50 inmates from Tulare County jails. If we could pursue that, I would appreciate it.
Okay, and that item will be considered, thank you. Any additional items for consideration? Okay, seeing none. Council, do we have need for closed session today?
We do, Mr. Chairman. Item B is off calendar, the remainder of the items will be heard in closed session. I do expect one announcement out.
Okay, so there will be one announcement. Thank you for attending today's regular session of the Board of Supervisors. We will now adjourn to closed session. Stay healthy.
This is her Sharon Sekan, reporting out for item A. The Board of Supervisors directed legal counsel to defend intended defense to applicant in the case of the Quea Klischen versus County of Tulare. This is her Sharon Sekan, Deputy County Counsel, reporting out for item A. The Board of Supervisors directed legal counsel to defend intended defense to applicant in the case of the Quea Klischen versus the County of Tulare, Tulare County Superior Court Case Number VCU 282553. The adverse party is the Quea Klischen, and the case involves litigation against the county regarding its approval of special use permit number PSP 19-019 Redwood Ranch. The roll call vote was unanimous with a motion by Supervisor Crocker and a second by Amy And this concludes the report out for today's closed session.